Time being 6:40, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present. On the agenda, we have Pastor Lane, Tina Kenyon, Farm View Estates update, Scott Burgess, 6:45, Brookside, Hill to Lane, construction cost estimate, 7 o'clock, Ashley DeSeyes?
DeSessa.
DeSessa. Planning Board, Talent Bank. And we have minutes to approve, bills to pay. And discussion for the FEMA map. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
I believe that Tina Kenyon will not be coming up tonight.
Just a fact, she's not here.
I think there was an email, but I haven't come across it.
Yeah, she, um, we, I got a letter from Larry Mayo and he said there were, there was no updates for the, um, for the future, so he said that he'd keep us advised to that. But, so I let her know, I said, you know, I gave her the option of coming to speak so that, you know, she had any questions or anything she wanted to discuss, but she said she'd rather not until she gets some updates, so I told her I'd let her know. We're here.
Should be clear on the next agenda, just to let you know. Maybe we can get...
I can do that, sure.
Thanks.
That would be the second, January 2nd.
Yeah, I feel like we're gonna have an update by then either. Maybe push it to the side Thursday, you know what I mean?
What are we doing? Is this really all information? Um, yeah, I was just looking through this. 6:45, probably yet, um... So, Scott, Scott Burgess?
Yep.
Which one's the one?
Both of them, yep. So, I'm back. Um, I've gone to Plan B. We're not going to rebuild a house on the property. We decided to go to another destination. So, back in 2009, this plan was approved for multifamily. Back then, it utilized the same subdivision road. They went through the planning board, went through the ZBA, was all approved. Neighbors were, at that time, they were happy for it. So, I'm basically trying to bring this back alive. I could possibly, and I haven't done the numbers yet, I'm still waiting for numbers to go back for the houses to build, but I could possibly do one or two of these, um, low income, or you go...
Affordable?
Affordables. You know, which would help the town with their, trying to get their 1% rate up a little bit and give back a little bit. But again, it all depends upon the numbers. I can't squeeze anymore into this, it is what it is. I wish I could put a couple more here, but this is actually a drainage lot. So, this is basically just a fact-finding mission, see how you guys feel about this before I go forward anymore.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions, or what are...
Um, either as opposed to this?
I think it's hard to tell without taking a look at what it is you're proposing, right?
Yep.
So, you're looking to come in under multifamily?
Yes.
So, under the multifamily, um, what you need to do is you need to get a site plan approval?
Yep.
And the way the bylaw reads, each building has to be on a separate lot.
Okay.
You have to start with a minimum of 10 acres for the whole parcel, which I think you have more than that.
Yeah, we have 20, almost 20, I believe.
One other thing to keep an eye out for is that, I think, what, 80% of the lot has to be perkable on that 200 by 200 grid, so of that 10-acre area, you have to be able to perk it off, right? So, if that whole half on the backside is all wetlands, then might not be able to qualify.
Alright, so each one of these has to have its own lot, you're saying?
Each building has to be on its own lot.
Okay. Do the rules change since 2010?
No.
There's been proposed changes, but town hasn't voted to accept any changes at any point, so it's, I believe it's still the same ordinance as it was back then.
Yep. So, how can this get approved? And basically, he never built it because it was 2008, 2009, there was no money back then, the possession, and it timed out.
I don't see where this was approved, though.
Uh, the actual signed-off copy is in the drawer someplace.
Okay.
Um, then it was never recorded.
Okay, so rescinded the subdivision, 2009, withdrew. But the subdivision cannot be rescinded, so the subdivision still stands.
Right.
Was the site plan approval of the multifamily ever rescinded, or did it expire?
Expired. So, they rescinded that. I have the meeting minutes here. You guys wanna try to follow along this bouncing ball, if that's what I can find online.
I think, I think what we have to look at is from this day forward. I mean, if that was approved and it's gone, it's gone, so, um... I mean, the way the bylaw is, each building has to be on a separate lot. Now, if all of these are connected, that could be considered as one building.
But I guess the bigger question is, right, is that portion right on Hill to Lane there, is that 10 acres on its own? Rex, I think that wetland issue might rear up, right? Because if the, how big is a 20-acre parcel? Does it go off the page over there?
It's right here.
At the river.
At the river.
That's all FEMA flood zone from like, I think, like somewhere like there back, right? From what I remember of the plan.
So, the way the bylaw reads is, it has to go in a 200 by 200 grid, and 80% of that has to perk.
Okay.
So, in other words, you have to get one perk hole in every 200 by 200 grid.
Right.
So, you know, if this doesn't, then maybe, maybe you cut that off, I don't know. Yeah, you look like, I'm gonna take an estimate of like 60% wetlands on the property.
Probably.
But if, if this whole thing is 23 acres from here to probably here, straight down, would be more than 10.
It's like 21 acres, right? So, from...
Yeah.
From here to the wetlands. 25 acres.
It's gonna be pretty tight, I would think.
Yeah. Well, you just have to get those 200 by 200 grid stuff.
Yep.
Get a hole.
And I know they, they did do a perk on majority of the property. I don't actually have the plan, Land Planning does, so I can get that overlay on it.
Yeah, it's most likely with the other configuration that you had, the percs were probably a lot closer to the proposed road.
Is that the road that...
Is approved.
Yeah.
Or the one that, because remember you came in with the adjusted, is it the adjusted road, or...
Nope, this is the approved one.
Okay.
The adjusted one, kind of just takes a turn this way just a little bit.
Okay.
It's the same length, 900 feet.
Oh, so it's under the 1,000.
Yeah.
Alright, so this just must be a redo of the other, because this, there's an actual, there's another lot and everything in there.
This is, uh, there's a lot line here, and that, this driveway actually would come in through here. They said, "I just brought these back to life," you know?
Is, is this what the old plan was?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you would actually pull that plan, wherever it is, whether it's in the ZBA or your guys' file, you would see this.
Okay.
The only difference would be that, that, there's a lot line here, and then this driveway, we'd have to just put here, you know? Other than that, it's...
Yeah, so this area, where this is no longer yours?
That's no lot, right.
Okay.
But the, my, my theory is if it hasn't, rules haven't changed, and this was all approved, how'd that get approved? You know, no, it can't.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not sure that we're saying it wouldn't. I think we'd have to take a look at it if you were gonna formally submit something, you know?
Right.
All I'm saying is what the procedure would be is, you need to get the site plan. So, you, you haven't approved subdivision, and it shows lots. I think you need to show the lots on it, because that's what's approved. Because what they did back then was, they tried to rescind the subdivision, and like I said, legally, you can't rescind it because those all the lots are already off of it.
Actually, the reason they, they took the rescinding back was, you had a mortgage on it and had to protect the bank.
Right, you can't, you can't rescind it if it's already gone to a mortgage.
Right. But there's no mortgage on it now.
But the other people have rights on it.
I highlighted some of the stuff to get the... Some of the stuff doesn't pertain to the whole meeting. I mean, who else wants to read some?
Is that, is it, is it multiple copies of the same meeting?
No, these are three different roads.
Alright, so, you could help me on this. Did I replace Dean Jafarian, only because I'm in here, but not listed as a member?
What year?
2010. 2010.
Oh, really, huh?
2010?
Well, only because you see here where it says, "Mr. Jafarian seconded the vote."
The date of the vote, or something like that.
Oh, 2010. I was gonna say, well, he's talking 2010, and I just was looking at them and...
It's like mold, brother.
Ah, maybe that's...
Here's mine.
Perhaps this wasn't true, but you can get higher.
Because it mentions everybody's own, right?
Yeah.
Because Dean got off... Was he on the edge?
So, this was...
Yeah. So, it was probably just Dean.
Walter Greeney.
Because, um, really got, really got off and then came back on.
He sold, sold it to Brown, is that what it was? And then you bought it from Brown, is that how it goes?
Well, he tried to sell it to Bradshaw, and that's who had the covenant and all that stuff, was supposed to do all the work. Bradshaw, he died, passed, something happened, he didn't pick it up, so all that, became our boys. Greeney owned it for a few more years, well, probably eight more years. He sold it to Bradshaw. Bradshaw picked it up, and then he looked at a number of different things and realized, once he got numbers for the road, he knew exactly what Greeney, same problem he had, couldn't make it work.
Gotcha.
So, that's why he sold it to me, because I've, I build roads, but I can't make it work.
Let's just see what everyone's working at here.
Every...
Is each one of these gonna be pumped?
Yeah, each one of these is a pump force main up to the air floor. I believe that might even be a dosing system, I'm not sure.
Yeah, 20 units, more than 2,000 gallons, you would need to have the pump system for that.
Just because of the way the grades are, maybe someone uses pumps.
Yeah, I've never seen it where you have a force main that's got like 20 connections on it.
2,018 units.
We're doing one right now, and he's got 29.
And they're all connected, they don't go by gravity to a pump at that low point, and then have a single force main coming back?
Really?
And what, what about this being in a zone 2?
What is a zone 2?
Isn't that what we just came up with from our last hearing? About, um, isn't this a zone 2, where it's near the water?
Well, zone 2 has to do with drinking water.
Oh, so this doesn't have to do with zone 2. But what about the flood zone? Is there anything new within our new bylaw? Will this supersede that, or... I'd have to look at the map.
It's funny, when you read that, it gets me all over the place. Same thing.
What was the ask, what was the ask back in 2018, in the summer? What were you here for?
I wasn't, I wasn't here, that was either Johnny Brown or Greeney.
Didn't see you.
Well, he's looking at dude, you know?
Basically, he was looking to do anything. He wanted to bail out.
It seemed like he wanted to know if it was rescinded. Right?
Again, that's just what I could find online, I'm sure there's more somewhere, but...
Would you just search it in the minutes?
I, one of my guys searched it, he's a, he's a hound dog like that, not me. I just go more technical than I am. I'm a dirt digger. See, they pull sticks all day long, I said. Comes to computers and that crap, not me.
So, it was clarified, right? The multifamily one was, it expired, but the subdivision's still good, right?
Right.
And the reason you're looking to do multifamily is because...
It doesn't make the numbers work.
Doesn't support the cost of the road to be a single family?
Yeah. And just shit-kicking numbers around, it still doesn't really work, you know? But I've got the bill to come in and try to get better numbers.
Yep.
You know, I know what the road's gonna cost me. Not what I should charge, but what it's gonna cost me, you know? That was everything. They got the, I got the, I'm a fella.
Are those inflated relative to what the actual cost would be, from your perspective?
My cost with direct labor, materials, is about $400.
Pretty healthy profit if you're charging $1.6, yeah.
If you have it all day long, I'll take that. All day.
There you go.
You know? I mean, your average road right now with two sidewalks, winded curb, pole blocks, water, sewer drain, is 500 by foot. So, you know, 900 feet.
Is it because of the fill? Is that why the numbers up high?
Well, that's one of his rules, that. And they, they also, didn't even really look at the plan, they put water in there, there's no water. And they use duct line when you can use plastic in this town. Yeah. They didn't even look at it. I don't know why, I don't think we should pay those guys. I don't wanna pay them, but fortunately, you guys already, probably did.
You're saying there's no water in this subdivision plan?
Nope.
How are you getting water to the houses?
Uh, there are wells.
Each one?
Yeah. Well, how do you send wells from?
How does that change with the multifamily and the sprinkler system?
Well, we'd have to put water in and do everything. That's what jacks the, the price up, I mean, it's, just to attach to the town, it's $40,000 to hook up sort of one pipe.
Yeah, how do you, how would you do fire hydrants on all water?
You wouldn't have any fire hydrants.
For the subdivision, you didn't have to put in hydrants?
Because there's one right at the end, right at the head of the street, right there.
It's a couple hundred feet long, and the cul-de-sac, aren't it?
900 feet to the very end.
Yeah.
Um, it's the way it was drawn, it was like, no detail fire, and each house has a well of water.
I don't think it even got passed, it's like nobody was reading the law.
It wasn't Florida government?
Yeah.
Oh, well, um...
When the subdivision went in, there wasn't water.
So, it was bad?
I thought, well, I think Chris got it in when he lived there with Michelle, which would have been before '05.
Subdivision plan went before us, there was no town lines.
I think it went in right after that.
Well...
$80 a foot for the box cul-de-sac, right? That's pretty funny.
They didn't have a plan showing the topography of the whole thing, huh?
This actually does have some different grades on it.
It's a lot of fill.
Well, it's insane.
The grades up on that side.
This one here is 37 or 38.
37. And you have 34 here.
40, yeah, good.
34. You got like 34 ridge in the middle, and then it probably just pitches off to the sides.
And then down here is, how many is 38 plus?
It's 30, 37 it says here.
And then 34, okay.
Doesn't make any sense, does it?
No.
Is that a 27, maybe?
What do you think? What do you think, what do you think? Yeah, it was a 27.
Oh.
It looks like it from afar, but if you really get on it, you know, it's up to...
But they jacked this road up, up here, the high point here, it pitched back this way and this way. I mean, it's just ridiculous. That's where all the fills come in from.
Well, this is the plan.
Why ask this question? So, actually, it's a plan issue like that.
Hey, I'm in a meeting, can I come?
So, this is my property here, all the way down here, up and around. So, here's a property line here, so that's one lot, the Webby, that's Webby's lot that he just lives in. If I was to build up past here to give him his 150 feet of frontage, it looks like he's got 160 there, put a hammerhead or some type of turnaround here, cap that off, make this a retreat lot, then one big house.
So, you wanna rescind the subdivision?
Well, I'd have to build the subdivision up to this point, stop it, boom, cap that off, and then I'd have the 50 feet for retreat lot, and then build somebody a really nice, you know?
I don't think you can build a retreat lot off a subdivision. That's the thing.
You can't combine a, um, an estate lot with the subdivision. But you would have the frontage probably for a traditional same-family house, if you wanted to build a big one back there.
Yeah.
But I think the whole point would also be to make that before the wetlands fracture, right?
Yes, which would shorten the road up, give us 150 feet to the limits here, but that, could the cul-de-sac start before that?
Wouldn't that just be like a change of subdivision?
I do, yeah, where you have something where the cul-de-sac wasn't actually based off the center line, where you just come up in one side.
Right, you would have to stay down past this, this point here.
But I think you'd have, you have plenty of area here, and that's not... That was the drainage lot, correct?
Right.
So, you got room to play. And you'd have plenty of frontage on the paper right away there, too, to be able to get, get a lot back here if you wanted.
It's a lot of money to pay for one house lot. That, you know, could be the deal breaker, but if you built a, you know, 3,000 square foot...
You could build a really nice house back.
You know, not for me, no. Not me. Somebody else, maybe they wanna buy and put some horses.
Well, it would be still, it would be able to apply for a 61A probably, because it would have, like, you know, that back lot? Because it would have over the six, six acres. And then they'd have maybe a farm, like you're talking.
Right, you know, somebody like horses could jump in there, maybe they could sell the thing off for 750, you know what I mean?
Kind of break even, huh?
And that's the goal. Just to get out of this thing.
Okay. So, how would he have to do that? And can he, can, can there be like a subdivision change in that you, how would that work?
You just bring in a change for it.
And then it can?
Go through the whole here and.
And then it records over the last subdivision, is that what happens?
Yeah, I guess. But I gotta, you know, I gotta do the numbers, make sure it works. And then unfortunately, you're building this thing in spec, if somebody wants to come in, you know?
Maybe offer it as a building lot and see what somebody wants to build on it.
Right.
Maybe that would be the way you go, cause maybe somebody would wanna build like an L-shaped ranch, or, you know, something different than what you built.
Just to get from here to this point here, you're still talking, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand by the time we get to there. You know?
That's your cost.
That's my cost. And then you throw the two hundred and quarter I paid for the lot, and all this other crap for the design, even. I'm gonna think for half a million. Throw a house up. You know, we're upside down, you know?
I'm sorry.
So.
If you, if you set that up right, you might almost be able to get two lots back here, right? Cause if it's three hundred feet around, you get, cut that in the middle, you get frontage on one side, and on the other, I could be back here, but.
But she's also gonna get frontage for that one, right?
Yeah, no, I get it. You gotta, one hundred and sixty there, so if you cut, yeah, so if you're cutting in part of the circle, that would be over there.
Going up some of that.
But then you'd have to cross the wetlands again here, get, you know?
You have to get creative.
That's probably now, it's spot in here, right?
Right. Yeah. Exactly.
Sorry, I understand.
I know.
I care. People want homes.
Yeah. Well, it's the cost to get to there and the cost of land, it's just, you couldn't grow enough. Maybe if we grew marijuana, then we might make some money there, but.
We'd have a nice big building for that.
We'll grow it outside.
I don't know if we're allowed to. Are you allowed to?
I have no idea. I know nothing about that stuff.
Not as of yet, but I believe that we had a hearing, what, a week and a half ago? Something about proposing it.
We built a big distribution place down in Meadowboro for a guy.
Oh, you did?
And he's got ten of them. This guy, he's rolling the dough. Rolling. It's the best thing ever happened, was leaf lights and that. So. But again, I'm not a farmer. I'm a dirt digger, not a farmer. So. All right. We'll back spend some more money with the engineers.
Merry Christmas.
How many, how many units were on that line?
Like nineteen? Nineteen units?
Yeah, nineteen units. And yet, even when you do the math for that, it's expensive.
Have you tried to put them, I don't even know. On the other plan? Have you tried to see if you can get multifamily on that?
The ZBA board wasn't that impressed. The neighbors weren't that impressed either. Just me trying to get a two-family online. Then they were all about, well, if you get one, then everybody else, you can put more on there, we don't want that. Blah, blah, blah.
Well, it seems to be different than what their determination is on the other.
Right.
Did you have a different proposal in front of, different board for something else?
No.
Yeah, you went to, you went to appeals board.
Yeah, I went to the ZBA to put my house up in here for a two-family.
On the subdivision, on the one that you showed us, right, with the road changed?
Yeah, and then I was gonna come back later to you guys and say, okay, I need to add one more lot and try to make that work. You know, just to get the house going. So I actually put off selling my house and pissed off my buyer, so he's gone. So now I don't have to get out by April, so it's a good thing. At least I got a place to live. So.
So what was that special permit you need from ZBA to do a two-family?
Yeah.
Yep. And they, did you have formal application, or you were just testing the waters?
No, I didn't formal. And they.
Turned it down?
Wanted me to go with a, an in-law, and I didn't want an in-law, cause you gotta leave a six-foot wide door between the two houses, so. You know, like I said to them, I don't even wanna watch myself walk around my underwear. You know, I love my kid, you know, so that just didn't work.
Was there a formal vote on it?
No, they, they wanna go out and look at the trees. They gotta go out and walk, walk up in the back and look at the trees. And get a feel for the area, whether or not it would work.
Okay.
One of the guys goes, look over there, it's the same thing. That was the guy, Nazarillo, sitting on the end. He goes, I gotta let you tell you right now, it looks just like that. So, yeah. That didn't go well. So what I don't understand is, you know, I mean, this is not to do with you guys, but the building department, if you build a, an in-law, you have the six-foot wide gate hole. But if you have a two-family, you have to have firewall and all the rest of the crap, but it's the same, same house.
I, I think we actually tried to get that changed, cause it doesn't make any sense, and nobody wants to have an in-law with that open. It doesn't make sense.
And then every five years, they come, you know, inspect you, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things we were going for, too, is that once that's approved, that should, that should last forever. No one should be able to revoke that later.
I have that ran off, and that was fifteen years ago, when I built the in-law.
Yeah, it just sounds ridiculous to allow someone to invest in their property and then tell them later on they can't use it anymore.
Yep. I'm back to drawing work for one of us.
You keep bringing them back, we'll keep looking at them.
Yeah, I know, but every time you, you draw something like this, I pay cost money. The engineers, they're not cheap, you know?
Yeah, we don't get paid enough sometimes.
It depends on where you sit.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Would you have a contingency from suitable housing?
Do I have one?
No, it's like to get out of it with your buyer.
No, I just told him I'd put it off for now. He's, he's my renter, he rents. I have a garage down back on the acreway. He rents after me, he's a landscaper. And he's got like one, a lot of models that wanna move into my house. That's what he was gonna do, buy the house, buy the property, so he wouldn't have rent anymore, and have them live there, and then he can expand where he puts all his trucks.
Gotcha.
So.
It wasn't a formal contract?
No, I had a PNS signed, and that was supposed to take place, I think, last week. They called him the night before and said, it's over. We're not moving right now, so, but maybe we'll pick it up in the spring, we'll see what happens. You know, so. Go from there. I do have somebody that's remotely interested in buying the whole project, but he's gonna hit the whole, you know, he's gonna be subject to permitting and all that crap. He's kinda gonna be before you and do all the same crap I've done, and walk out there and beg his head against the wall like I'm gonna do in two minutes. And then go, yeah, we're all set.
I'm sorry.
As sorry as I am.
Thank you very much, guys.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
Ashley? Sorry for the delay. The chair. So Ashley's put a name in and is interested in coming on the planning board? So have you got any preconceived ideas for the planning board?
Uh, not exactly.
Just what you saw tonight?
Or it's better than the finance committee? No. I like this kind of stuff. I have a real estate license, and right now, I'm director of operations at a home improvement company, so I handle all their permitting and plans and working with engineers to do additions and things like that, so.
Perfect.
It's interesting to me to see things like that and his plans, and why we can't do stuff with wetlands and all that stuff. So I figured, I'm kind of in it for the long haul now. I just bought a house. I have two kids that are first grade and preschool. We're here to stay until they're done in school, so I figure I might as well try to get involved somewhere. This seems like the most interesting, so, I could be wrong, but it seems like the most interesting.
Yeah. So you have a, a good feeling for looking at plans and whatnot?
I do, and if I don't know something, I'll ask instead of speaking out of turn, so. Up to learning new things, and I mean, I've learned a lot of different things, even over the last year of doing what I'm doing now, so. Be interesting to see all your knowledge and rack your brains and learn different things, see what I can help bring to the table.
So you just moved into Halifax?
No, I've lived here, um, probably almost six years now.
Okay.
I grew up in Carver, and didn't wanna stay there, so. Close enough to home, but, you know, still far away.
Thank you.
So I can still get to my dad's, and he can still see the grandkids, but growing up, you always have that, like, you know, silver-like envy. Especially living right there in Carver, and I'm like, God, I don't know why, couldn't have found that place a little bit more. So it was just always where I wanted my kids to grow up. So it took us a little while to get here, but we did rate in time for my son to start preschool here, so. Now we're, we're here for good. We bought a house that we're gonna stay in now, so.
Good, nice.
Fun.
Yeah.
They just rebuilt a bunch of the schools in Carver, though, didn't they?
Yeah, still doesn't make it worth it. I'm not a, I don't know, I don't wanna stay where I grew up, it's just, it's a very small town over there.
Yeah. I believe it.
Yeah. You agree? Yes, there's, there's something else. It's, you know, I worked there for a long time, too, after I moved away from there, so. I've got all good ties there, no bad blood, it's just I didn't wanna raise my kids there, new school and all.
Sure.
That's what I got.
You worked in Carver?
I did for a long time before I got involved in real estate and home remodeling. I was a manager of a restaurant over there.
Oh, wow. Momma Mia?
No, the smokehouse. It was fun for a little while, until you get married and have kids, I don't wanna work nights and weekends, and every Sunday, and holiday nights, and all that stuff, so. It's time for a career change to be around a little bit more.
Yeah.
Do you have reservations about, twice a month, coming at nighttime?
No, this is great. Peaceful for me, I'm here, I don't have to listen to kids running around and yelling. It's nice to get up for a little bit. Plus, this stuff's interesting to me, so it's fun to look at the plans and do different things.
Sure. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. Do you have any questions for me?
You answered it, answered them, cause you were good with talking.
So the planning board, not zoning, just planning and school committee?
Um, yeah, for now. I really would love to get on school committee one day, just because my kids are in the system. But I figured I'd start here and see something I like before I start jumping into a whole bunch of committees.
Yeah, I agree. Have you volunteered for any other boards or committees, school boards, anything like that?
I try my best to attend as many PTA meetings as I can. I currently am on the roster to be able to sub at the elementary school and in the Kingston district. I'm not doing that as much as I used to. Now that I have the day job, it was more of a thing when something was more interesting when I was working nights, something I could do during the day and pick up, and schedule wasn't so Monday through Friday. But I try to, you know, volunteer and bring stuff in when I can, when the school does drives and things like that. I do their, Justin Art, so I go there one Friday a month and do art to the kids and pick into whatever the kids are doing. I know this is not really what the kids are doing, but it kind of is. The stuff kind of decides what the town's gonna be when my kids are growing up in it, so.
Yep.
It's kind of my thing, kids, and seeing what, I like this town, it has a lot of charm to it, that's why I like it, so.
Do you have any ideas on what you think the town should be, or what you envision for kind of where it's gonna be a couple of years in the future?
I mean. Everything costs money, so who knows where everything's gonna be in the future, and what's gonna go up and down, and, you know, I would just, I like the feel that, you know, everyone's so friendly here, and everyone seems to wanna help each other, and I don't really have a vision of where we're gonna be. I just hope that we're gonna be in a spot where we're keeping up with the times, and people wanna live here, and can afford to live here, and wanna stay and contribute, and have their kids in the school system and grow with the town, cause if you don't have people living in the town, then, you know, the finances coming in to be able to support the town, so. I mean, ideally, we just wanna keep that trend going. I would like to see more, you know, families with kids in the school system that wanna come in and grow with the town, whatever, wherever it's gonna go, so.
Okay. I got nothing else.
Okay. Typically, we're just two nights a month. Occasionally, something comes up that we have to do a little more than that, but it's pretty much our schedule.
Yep.
And what's the process again? You have to get appointed for the first time, and then you have to go to town meeting to get voted in?
Uh, what we're looking for right now is to appoint somebody to fill a vacancy until May.
I would have to run, I think, and be elected in the town.
Right, yep.
So, be fun to get in and see if it's something I wanna do in May.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually a perfect opportunity. I did the similar thing where I filled in for someone and gave me a couple of months, see how it goes.
Yeah. You never wanna make a, what is it, like a five-year commitment you guys have?
Yeah.
Well, what you'd be doing is filling out the term that Jonathan left, so I don't know the, I don't know what time he runs out.
We looked at that.
I think it's May of twenty twenty.
No, but I thought it was a short term after that.
I think that's what we determined, right?
It's on the website.
What's that?
Oh.
Jonathan was.
Oh, so you would be until, yeah, huh?
But I, I do believe you'd still have to go in May. And then you'll run, and then you, but you'd get one year, and then you'd have to run again. He's even off this list, so the one that's missing is twenty twenty-one.
You'd think that you'd just fill the rest of the term, right?
No, no, you have to get voted in.
No, I was just thinking that that would be the way it would be.
You can only be appointed until the next town election.
Gotcha.
And then at the election, the townspeople vote the person in, so if you run and you get elected, then you'd be filling out his term, which runs out in twenty-one.
So you got to run again.
That would be for five years.
Got it.
So at that point, you could decide whether or not you wanna commit for five years or not to. So, it's kind of a great opportunity, cause you come in and hit it for a short appointment, run. If you get elected, then be one year, and make sure everything's what you want, and then run to the five year.
I'm learning a little bit.
Yeah, and then once you take the five year, you can't quit for five, five terms after that.
They arrest you, is that what it is? Just so you know on this, this is the first time we've actually had a lot of applications for the thing, so. If it doesn't work out, like, I hope you, like, save your enthusiasm and, like, still keep coming back or look for other things.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of how I figured, come in, meet you guys, and then I got to meet the selectmen on January fourteenth or something like that, and if it happens, it was supposed to happen, if it wasn't, if it happens, it's not.
Then we're gonna do a joint meeting with them. Have we said, are we joining on the fourteenth joint?
For the selectmen? It's just for the interviews. On that, you can, we can attend, but.
No, no, we have to have a joint meeting with them to a point, because they get vote, we get votes.
On the fourteenth, right.
Is that the fourteenth where scheduled to be at their meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'll be the same time.
How many applicants we actually have now? We've only talked to two people, right, you being the second?
I think it's, it's technically four, but.
Tim, Tim for us.
It's four, but Tim has not shown up.
He didn't show up for us, but he said he will be at the selectman's interview.
So we've done three applications.
So he says, he said, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions for us?
I think so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
You too.
It's on January 14th. Good times. Is that gonna be like a seven o'clock one or?
I think they'll probably be at a time, like an appointment time.
Now, good. Would you happen to know how the, the voting takes place when we have four people? Do we pick one of, does each person pick one of the four? Or does all four people get a yes and a no from everyone? I was trying to figure this out last time.
Oh, yeah, I remember talking about that. I forgot.
Yeah, like do we just pick? Because like, well, I think it gets difficult when you have a bunch of good applicants. You want to tell them all yes.
There'll be seven of us. So we can each pick a different one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, but I mean, do you put somebody's name up for nomination? Whoever gets the most amount of votes wins? Or does everybody just pick one top candidate and whoever the top vote getter is taking that approach wins? Make up your own rules?
I'll ta, I'll talk with the selectmen and see with that.
I wish I could tell you. I don't.
Yeah, the, when we've done it before, we've had like maybe two candidates. So now if you have four, I mean, it's just.
Well, I just was at a selectman's meeting and the board of health just appointed a new member. And there was only one board of health member there. And so they just took his vote along with, I forget what the selectman did, but it was just his one vote.
Yeah, so each member of the board gets a vote. If you don't go to the meeting, you don't have to vote.
Makes sense.
So if, if four of us go and there's three selectmen, there's seven people voting. If only two members of the plan would go and there's three selectmen, then there's five people voting.
That's how the numbers work down. I don't want to say no to anybody because like they're all up, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. It's nice to see people stepping up and up and up.
All right, what's next? Did we skip the pasture lane talk or what happened here?
She, Tina did not, um, we didn't have any more information from Larry Mayo. So he decided not to come to the meeting. He has some updates. He said there's been no updates at all.
Is it on him or on us to do something? Who is looking into it?
He was. He came here with all the information. He called the line and he took it with him. And let us know when it's in practice.
And what is he looking into? The benefit of potentially deeding the land to the town?
Tried to take that lot, probably. The builders that have that, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, trying to figure out how we would actually position or pave the road.
I was in contact with Larry and I talked to him about, Charlie had called him about taking a look at it. What he said was that there may be some legal ramifications that the town could, even if the town did take the lot, they could still go back to the developer. So he's kind of looking at that avenue. Right now, Mark Camo, I have spoken to him since we had our last meeting again. And he said he is still willing to, to do, sign it over. He was gonna get me some documentation. He hasn't gotten that. When I get that, I'm gonna turn that over to Larry and let Larry Mayo run through that.
And he's our attorney?
He's the town's attorney, yeah. And, uh, because he wants to take a look at what he was deed in and all of that and to see.
Make sure the title's clean and all that.
Yeah, all that.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
You know, sometimes getting all the mics not easy. But he, uh, I did speak with him and he is still willing to do that, so. And then Larry Mayo was looking into the other side of it where if we had offered the deed, then the town meeting has to accept it. Similar to what we had to do at the last town meeting with the Dena Road stuff over there. We had to accept it. And then there has to really be something brought up and proposed to the people as to, okay, if we're gonna accept this, what, what are we gonna have to do?
Yep. Well, we have an estimate for what the repair is gonna cost, right? So.
Right. But I mean, what, what it would have to be is presented to the people, okay, if we take this, then we're gonna have to spend this money to bring the road up to the standard that we want it at.
Which would then be offset by the proceeds of selling the lot afterwards.
And then at that point, the town could sell a lot off.
Right now, he's looking to see if there's a chance if we take the road that he might be, current owner might be responsible for some of the costs that we incur. All right, that'd be good. But if that were the case, he's probably not gonna deed it over to us. We'll just sit on it forever.
But, but there's now two people, that's why.
I thought the first.
The owner that had it.
Yep.
Deeded it over, sold it to Mark Camo. Mark Camo is the one that's willing to deed it to the town.
So how is the previous owner still involved?
That's what the town's attorney is looking at. Because the agreement was with him, with him. And he wasn't supposed to.
Sell it.
Sell it off. So. But we still, we kind of need to push that up because it's, May is coming fast and we need to.
There it is.
So should we keep it on the agenda for January 2nd or do you think we'll still not have a determination?
Please put it on for update.
For January 2nd, but we're saying it's most likely we might not have updated.
For discussion.
Recurring item until it's dealt with.
Yeah, until it's done. And then, um, we do have some bills.
I also get this strange letter from Eric Allison that has too many acronyms that I don't understand. I do not know what the FIS date will be established in the LFV. I had that same question, and if you trace it back to earlier emails, it's a letter of final determination. But then he talks about these sections of the zoning that need to be updated. He didn't tell us what the wording should be. Here, update this. You need these sections in your zoning.
What was the other thing?
What did they need to say?
Letter of final determination.
So I think that's when FEMA officially.
Then we have a letter from the postal service.
This is actually the best letter with the most amount of information we've received.
Right? Like.
I think this would have clarified everything right off of that, if we had that.
Well, it doesn't clarify everything.
Well, it just says, it says that we don't have to do anything and it's between the developer and them.
Except for the fact that they should be planning for it. And that wherever it's planted, there should be an easement.
Oh, no, no. See, I, I, I didn't read it. I don't see it. I just see it's up between those two.
No, I'm saying between us. I mean, if we have a subdivision plan come in and they're putting one of those somewhere, there should be an easement for that to be put on.
No, no, no. This is between those two.
This current one. Yeah. And she says she's not making them do it, but I was meaning.
She's not making.
In the future, we should just try and include it in our site plans.
Did she say she wasn't gonna make them do it?
That's what I thought unless I'm out to lunch, but uh-uh. Will not be enforcing the installation of a cluster box unit for the Ryder's Way subdivision.
No, they're saying that we won't, not that they won't.
She was only seeing of our letter stating that.
See, I told you. I didn't read it a hundred percent.
I just thought it's between them two and then I. Yeah, we can't enforce them to put in a certain kind of box, but they need to plan for it and we need to have it shown on the site plan.
So actually this isn't giving us any informo, any info, any more information to be honest.
Well, it says that we don't have to. We're not responsible for enforcing it. That's.
Basically, we're not responsible for it. That's really.
So like when they come in, we can tell them, hey, go talk to the postmaster. And then when their plan comes in, we can see if it's on it, but. Can we upload that to the website?
But the problem that this creates now is she's saying that they're gonna just talk to the developer. But where's it going? Is it going on private property?
It's between them two.
Yeah, I understand. But what I'm saying is it's not gonna be shown on the subdivision plan.
No, it should be.
No, it should be going forward. But for this.
On the Ryder's Way one, at this point, it's too late. It doesn't really matter for our perspective.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're not gonna make them cap out the right way.
We don't. But I was just looking at it hopefully that they would realize that that subdivision was put in before this and that they need to. But when I, I was sitting down on Ocean Ave and I was driving in the Hanson areas and there's cluster boxes everywhere and it's very random. It looks weird. Really odd.
Those are all people that pulled the, their mail from the post office.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The little post office?
They pushed them to go out and get, have cluster boxes instead.
Why?
I don't know.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't like their PO boxes keep that little post office alive? Oh, you know what I mean? You would think that the post office would want that income, monthly income. I, I think that when I had a PO box, it was like forty-five dollars a month or something. Oh, no, for three months. Something like that. But that's, that's a lot of time, however many boxes you have.
Overall, more efficient of a system, right? If they don't have to throw the truck, they just slide it through the hole. You figure they would definitely try to push that and.
Right? Wouldn't it be a lot easier for them like instead of stopping at cluster boxes all over the place? I don't know, but I don't run the post office, so.
I don't think anybody does.
We asked the IT department if it's possible to put a link up to these things? To the US post office requirements? Can we upload it to the website like next to the subdivision requirements or something? So if somebody asks about it, we could just point them to it? So they, they gave us a document, right? The post office guidelines. Can we ask the IT department or whoever it is that does it if they can upload that PDF document to the website or provide a link to the post office?
The one that she was, the handout that she gave to us when we.
So that if somebody's looking around and trying to figure out how to do a subdivision, we can just tell them to follow those guidelines?
Yeah, and it is just guidelines. It's not, I don't think it's a law that can be.
No, but post offices can enforce those on people, so you might as well give people the information. Do you want to talk about those FEMA map things, Mark, that you had a question on?
No, I, I just didn't know what it meant.
Is there anything that we need to do on this?
I think that they, um, bylaws according to this would need to have a hearing, right? To accept it or is this like not anything? I mean, it would just probably be more or less the town in like this is what needs to happen.
It's just crazy because it almost sounds like we're supposed to come up with two articles to present to the town? No, we have to send it to him and he wants to review it. And then he'll give us comments back on it. This is two. Is that true? I think it's true. And then. So who would even draft that up? Do we need to come up with something? Does a zoning board come up with something?
Oh, bylaw change?
Yeah. So we have to write an article saying that we are updating panels and then. No, you basically just in the flood, just probably the flood protection overlay district or something that we have, right? So in that one, you reference the latest greatest FEMA flood maps, which are how you determine the floodplain overlay. So you just have to reference rate maps. So I think that's all they're really doing. But then, so there's two new articles that they want us to add, which I understand why they're.
Well, they've probably changed them because of the insurance that it affects.
Yeah, yeah. No, they reissue maps every couple of years, right? So there's gonna be new maps.
When they put them out originally, they didn't really.
There'll probably be more elevations identified instead of just generic zone A's, right? It's so ridiculous trying to find someone bound on a range four miles away to run an elevation certificate. It's ridiculous.
So the way it reads to me is that he's, let me make sure I'm right, because I just misread the other one. Yes, the maps have been, have to be adopted in the bylaws. See, section 167-15 of his own, and I will provide changes necessary to this section in order to meet FEMA's requirement, so. He, he, he looks like he's gonna send them.
No, that's what he did. That's what the second page of this document is. That's what he sent us. Did he also send a model bylaw? Joanne, was there like a separate document or something else that he added?
This was everything that I had that Carrie referred to me.
Oh, when you have a draft, there's so much to refer to.
What is 167-15? Is that the floodplain?
Yeah, floodplain district regulations.
So when they're, they probably, yeah, see how it references the map numbers and the panels and all that stuff? So I think they just want to reference the correct ones. And the correct dates, right? So you go to the next page.
New effective date, yeah.
So it carries over. So there's map IDs, there's dates. So I think they just want to make sure that everything's called out correctly.
We'll have to put in all of these numbers along with all of these?
No, it replaces those. Because the floodplain district is associated with the latest greatest FEMA maps. And these will be the latest greatest FEMA maps when it's all said and done.
Gotcha. So replace those and then it would be June 19th, 11th or something like that.
Whatever date, right? It's that they have to figure out a final date and then the effective date is six months after that date.
It seems like they would do. So they're just giving us the numbers to put into our thing.
So is there an article one or anything? In this, like the first intro, what's the first section of this?
A floodplain district.
Well, it's like the definition out there, right?
The floodplain district is here and established as an overlay district, yeah, basically. And then all the map numbers, the exact boundaries of the district may be defined by the 100-year base flood elevation shown on the front, which is capital F-I-R. And further defined by the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Study Report dated. And so we probably have to change that date too. And then the rest of it is development regulations. Which he didn't give us anything there.
And I think we could probably keep all the old stuff. He probably wants us just to add the purpose section and the floodway data section.
And then send it to him for review.
Yeah. So how do we go about doing that, right? Can we ask him maybe if he could send us a copy of the quote-unquote model bylaws section? So how do we go about doing that, right? Can we ask him maybe if he could send us a copy of the quote-unquote model bylaw sections that he's referenced there? So we can just cut and paste whatever it is he's looking for. But then to even make the change, you gotta go to town meeting, right?
So, you're requesting that?
He referenced in his letter that he sent that we should add two articles from the model bylaw. If he could provide the verbiage for those two articles, that would help us figure out where they need to go.
I'd be willing to try and draft and send it to him and see what he sends back.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, but I think we need to find out what that language is, right? Without digging around too much on what the quote-unquote model bylaw is, because what I think he's referencing is that they've stock language that they give people. And I think he's referencing two sections as if we had those sections already, and maybe we do somewhere. If you can build it, maybe it comes up with FEMA. Model bylaw. And he's with D C R, right?
Yep.
He's the Assistant Director for Flood Hazard Management Program.
Terry, Terry asked, there were some questions back here.
Yeah, it's just to do with timing for the town meeting. And. So, he just asked, he added. I don't know the date, but he added in here that he just learned the L F D will not be sent today and that FEMA is now aiming for today, December nineteenth. Which would mean an effective date of June nineteenth for the affected panels and the F I S.
That was for Cape Cod, and I think we're in the Tottenham River watershed, I don't know.
I can just set that.
Unless we're all part of the Cape Cod one?
I don't think so. They have totally different flood charts, a lot of, but who knows, we might be getting close, right?
Tottenham.
I know.
So maybe he was just talking about Cape Cod in terms of precedence, maybe they're going first and then they're gonna do Tottenham next? Because they do by county, right? Cape Cod's Cape Cod County, right? It's its own county unto itself.
Or is it by, no, it's by watershed, maybe?
Cape Cod's not, Cape Cod County, is it?
No, it's.
Is it Balsall?
Uh, you might be right.
It is.
Are the islands in their own county? Or they're part of the same?
They're, um, Dutch, uh, Duke.
Dukes?
Dukes or something.
Something like that. I, I don't really deal with them that much.
Yeah, let's just ask the guy for the specific language he wants included. See if I see anything on that website. Any other questions on that one? And then that's the hills. Couple of bills. Couple of bills, one for Mainway. Kinda hard to believe they would have included a bunch of water line things for a plan that didn't show any of that. I wonder if they're looking at the latest greatest plans.
Avery?
Yeah. Do we have a copy of the plans?
Yeah, we do.
Of the Hill Delane plans? I'd be curious if they just missed it. Because they included a bunch of fire hydrants, very specific things, and I don't think you could just make up.
We have no plan yet tonight.
No, that's not the one they would've based it on. They would've based it on the subdivision plan, right?
Yeah.
It's all about like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Is that the overt one? That might be the overt one.
Yeah, between the main, the gatehouse and the hydrants.
And then stick that to line by which.
Yeah, so in town, they still have to do copper into the hogs through the foundation, okay?
If it's over a hundred feet, you can use plastic.
Are we allowed plastic for the mains in town? I was like, really?
I think we have a zoning board, uh, bill here.
It's all the same stuff, right?
There's an August.
Jordan, am I looking at this incorrectly? The W B Mason, though, seems to be the town's zoning, town hall's zoning board.
Um, definitely.
Both of the W B Mason say, um, say the zoning board on the, on the ladder head.
Yeah, you know why? It was because a lot of the property board, she put the order in. I don't know how she did it through that. Probably because I had a sign on for. Is that what you're suggesting?
Oh, yeah, I was just, I'm curious, yeah.
I believe that's why it says zoning. It was, it was for the plan.
But the planning changed for heating, uh, uh, an electric heating?
It's, it's the little heater. It's freezing in the daytime, so you just got those little heaters.
No.
No, I was just asking what it was.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why. I think it's because you have to sign on to order for them and I don't, so yeah.
Well, you see why I was asking. I was thinking that it was just.
That's why, at first, when Susan said, I'm like, we're not paying that.
Why? I understand you need to get over this. You only need to get over it.
I don't get it. That's, that's what Scott was saying.
Do I have to motion to pay these, or are we on some?
You don't have to go that high to, to get it. You're getting a three percent slope. Three point seven, uh, three point five percent over here.
There must be a reason.
Well, I mean, you, like you said, you could see they have cobble, but you didn't make that much.
All right, this is the limitation right here, getting across the land. That is so bizarre. Why would anybody ever do that? Mister survey.
Barbara, Barbara did those.
Is that the same person that's doing the current lodging form?
No, no, that was, um.
Was she like a town person? Did she live in town?
No, she was doing stuff for, um, Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, that's.
I think she had just started at that point.
That's really strange.
Yeah, when you look at the side slopes.
You just look at it, right? And you're like, why is this pipe floating in space?
And if you didn't have that height, you wouldn't have to come out this far.
No, why doesn't he just?
How does he came up?
Why doesn't he just change the design, just because it's right away defined?
That's what he wanted to do, was to change the, the design of this and then shorten this up. Because you wouldn't have to have it that long.
Why doesn't he do that?
Well, I think that was one of the things that he wanted to do when he was changing, but he had to keep the road, the tangent path for a certain length before he did it. But I think he was saying that right off the bat, that he knew that he could change that crossing.
I mean, you do that when you have a twenty-foot hill in the back that you gotta take down.
Yeah.
Spread it around.
Or if you're in a big hole and lots are pitching down towards the middle, you have to make it up sooner or later. It's absurd. And how'd they come up with their estimate? How'd they come up with their estimate? There's no water lines. I don't get it.
So they got this, I mean, without, without a water, me, um.
They don't even reference the plan in their estimate, do they?
It does say, uh, eleven feet, plan revised August fifth, two thousand and five.
August fifth, two thousand and five? Oh, okay, there's more. This one's revised October thirty-first, two thousand and five. Did he even outdated one? Did it used to have water on it, too, now? And they're like, oh, wait a minute, there's no water on it?
She had no clue.
We had the earlier plan there, right? Do you have the rest of the package there? Do you have the rest of the package there with the older plans? There was a different set of plans.
We've, uh, started in August, September.
So this is the revised.
That's the August. That's the plan they used for their pricing.
Yeah, eleven.
Tunnel water lines. That's weird.
They're, they're showing water lines?
No, they're not.
So what, are those circles highlighted?
He called those two in his list.
I don't know, that's a trees, right? Right?
Nine hundred feet? Is the road nine hundred feet long?
Yeah. Well, see, unless he just pulled out another one that he did in Halifax with nine hundred feet.
Here it is. Maybe just assumed, uh, missed the water line. They're gonna have to put a water line in. Do you think you would?
We should ask them to.
I don't think it matters. He, he knows what it's gonna cost him to build this, right? He's saying you're gonna afford a grand. As opposed to one point six, it wasn't pencil out.
The only real difference it comes is that he does a bond. He's gonna have to bond with one point six, right?
You know what I mean? Like, I think, in fact, we paid them to do a job if they didn't look at the plan and see no lie, right, you know?
That's, from that standpoint, we should definitely have them correct it and give them the right set of plans and say, here's the plans, it seems like you missed some stuff, please.
Did Avery come in and get a set of plans?
No, he hasn't. You mean recently? No.
Well, he gave us an estimate based on the plans.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't, no, I ran out of the truck in my hand, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
On, on hill, on hill.
You're not here every day, it's okay.
That's probably proof enough that he didn't come in and get one.
Well, I mean, he had to get it signed.
Yeah, sure, I'm holding on.
But did he? I don't. Let's see where he got it. It's not on yet.
So they acknowledge that this is if the town were to do the work, because the cost includes prevailing wage. Why would they base it on the town that did the work? Because if you collect on the bond, the town would have to do it?
No, because if he's a bond, then the bond token is gonna. He did, yeah.
No, but I guess if he were to default on the project and the town were to collect on the bond, the town would then have to build the road. So he's saying the town would have to build it on prevailing wage. So it's always gonna be somewhat inflated when we get the bond, because it's not gonna be the developers' cost to build, right? And that's what he acknowledged, is it?
Typically, what they do is they'll throw, um, you know, fifteen percent on the top.
No, they do that, too.
Yeah, I think this includes the fifteen.
Is there any, and I'm asking, is there any regulation that makes it that now that Haywood Street has water, that they need to connect?
No, if the plan is already approved.
So they don't have to connect where Haywood has water now?
I would think that'd be more sellable if they had public water.
I mean, I.
So maybe he wants to add water, but he said.
I bet you.
He would if the numbers were.
Totally would have to, if the.
If the numbers were. I mean, if the nu- if, if the cost of the road is so high.
Yeah, is there.
Then you add water to it, then it doesn't make it work, then you would try to sell your houses without it.
But you're right, is that, is there a way for us to get these, for the older ones, to make them update? That would be.
It's not like there's a bylaw that says, yeah, because sometimes a bylaw says like you have sewer in the front, you're required to connect and you have to pay a mitigation fee if you don't connect.
I don't know, I don't know. Better, better than that.
Whatever.
If the town runs water past your house, you're gonna look up and you're gonna pay someone.
When you sell, you have to connect to the town sewer.
Because they have a.
I wasn't here when it came in, but he.
Oh, but you didn't have a betterment, is that what you're saying?
Which I.
And typically, they don't do a betterment of the water. They do it in the sewer.
So at least he had a copy.
And in this case, lots have the furniture on the new roadway, and the new roadway doesn't have water, so I think it'd be hard to force people to put a new subdivision line in, right? If you want, if there was new water in the subdivision, everybody was just on their own well.
Right.
Potentially. So are we about to kick this back to Avery, have him try again?
Yeah. I, I would say have him take another look at it.
Yeah.
He's sending a bill in right now to get paid for it. He did.
How much is the bill?
Eight hundred. I mean, it should reflect the ton of water.
I agree, like, the game, the guy to do the job and it's. Simple as that.
Yeah. All right, well, I make a motion then to, um, send the bill to E. Murray Engineeris from the dates November first. Sorry, I just lost where they were.
Could we just not approve it?
Well, do we have to send it back for?
No, we don't have to send it back.
We're gonna send him back this estimate, so he can revise.
Question, question is estimate.
So we don't need to make, so just a motion not to pay the bill?
You don't have to make a motion, we just.
Not pay the bill.
We just hold it off till the next meeting.
Okay. So there's no note on it or anything like that?
What's the, what's the other bill on there?
This is the W B Mason for thirty-seven ninety-nine for. The heater.
That is the other W B Mason one.
So you just wanna hold up on Avery, just wanna wait?
Yeah. Right. Yeah, we'll just table, we're gonna table his bill until our next meeting.
We want him to take another look at his estimate that he prepared, not his invoice.
To compare it to the plan. And one of the questions is his, um, calling out water, which there's no water on the plan.
A motion to pay the bill for W B Mason in the amount of thirty-seven ninety-nine for a ceramic heater, uh, block.
Lock heater. Is it just that one bill? No, no, I'm saying the amount.
Yep, thirty-seven ninety, thirty-seven ninety-nine.
Have a motion, is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you need to sign right at the top there, the shooting spot. Three signatures. Yeah, let's check the pen, stop it, right. Do we get the signed one in here, and then the other one?
Should we have them include the cost of a C D U in his estimate? We have minutes to go through?
Mm-hmm. We do.
Do we do it in order? How do you wanna do it?
I was thinking that it would probably be best in order, right?
I would. September five?
Can you guys take care of those stuff? I'm gonna get out of here.
Yeah.
Hey, you okay?
Yeah. I had surgery, gallbladder surgery, and I'm kind of.
Well, you're.
Come.
Oh, I hope you're okay.
Yeah.
Go relax a little bit, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you so much for the help, man. I said thank you.
Okay.
I don't know, I appreciate that.
All right.
Can we vote on the ones that you're here for? That you were here for? Do we just need a basic majority to be able to approve the minutes?
You just need, so where do we have ones that just out?
I think the seventeenth may be the only one that would just be me, you, and Amy.
Do you wanna do that one now?
The seventeenth of October, you mean?
Yeah, I'm almost done reading it, if you don't mind.
What are we gonna do about the one where Jonathan Soroco was gone, and then it's okay on September fifth, but if, you know what I mean?
So Gordon, Mark, and Amy were there for that one.
Is it, you can still vote even though part of the meeting you were refused, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess the question, do you need to vote on them, or can just chew out the? Uh, because it'd be two of them.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be three.
Or a majority, right?
And then the November seventh meeting too?
Yeah, it looks like Toddler showed up late on that one, so I think he should be.
And it is just a majority, right? Not all the members that were present have to vote.
But it still has to be three. Has to be three members. But you can't have, you can't have a meeting without three.
Correct.
And then those three have to vote to approve the minutes. So is it just that one that you got, or is it two?
September fifth is me, Mark, Jonathan, and you.
And October seventeenth, who's not here, so you three were the only three here. We can do this some other time, right? There's no people.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's just do the minutes one at a time.
Okay.
Okay.
Or you can do the ones.
So are we gonna?
We'll skip the ones that Gordon needs to be here for.
Yeah.
Take care of.
Hope you feel better. All right, so not the seventeenth. Not the fifth. We can do the twenty-fifth. And.
Or the nineteenth, you can't do either.
Yeah, so I think that's it, November seventh and September twenty-fifth. That's all we can do.
Well, you know what, honestly, that's enough by tonight anyways, isn't it?
To do, to do just these two, or you wanna call it?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I mean, to do just those, yeah, because this is a lot.
That's fine. This is the one that you edited, right? This is that special one that we had? So I'm, I'm fine with it. We didn't highlight the edits, right? Because I looked at this once upon a time.
Yeah, but if it's the same thing plus what you wanted added, then.
Yeah, I think that's fine. You wanna review them still, or are you good assuming it was incorporated?
I just was gonna finish reading the September twenty-fifth one.
Okay.
I tried to read them, but it's been a busy couple of weeks. As much as I would like to say I remember everything about that meeting, I don't, because we've had so many, and they're mind-boggling, and this has been two, three months now, you know what I mean? So I remember.
Figuring one from the other. We discussed a lot of the same stuff each time and.
Yes, so it's hard, but that's why I think they're supposed to be. And then thirty days.
Yeah, I can make the minutes, right? So I think all they did, we already reviewed this once, and I think all great year requested edits, right?
Yeah.
That's the only part, which is what she wanted to change, but that's different.
Yeah, and I don't have the minutes to compare, but exactly what was.
I left them in there, the original, just on yours, I put the twelve copies.
I think there's a copy behind that.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know. No, I meant I don't have the minutes to compare these minutes to what was in the minutes, I can't find them right now.
The ones you marked up, and I think Joanne's saying is underneath that copy is.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know, I mean, like, the minutes from the meeting that I quoted. But I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, does anyone have an official copies?
I have an official copy.
Okay.
Joanne, is there an official, official version?
If I can get Gordon's.
Gordon had the folder three minutes in it, those are the ones they both. Two sets need to be signed.
Okay, this one says copy, it's okay to say copy on one of them?
The one that's not the copy. Gordon goes to the classroom one, because Gordon requested that we do, I guess Terry always does two copies. Okay, sorry.
You better watch us, though. You might never use that sample. I don't know how much they cost, I think we have to buy them all the time, too.
All the time, right?
All right, so then, we can't do the nineteenth of September. We can't.
To the fifth or the seventeenth of October?
Or the seventh of November.
Seventh of November, we could do.
Am I, excuse me?
Because I came late.
Oh, right, sorry, I forgot that, I only read that part.
Yep, do you want the signed copies, or do you want the back of the folder?
I think of both, so two copies of each.
Not the nineteenth. Not the first. And then, so that means we only have the seventh, is that, am I correct?
November seventh, yep. How do we decide when we're actually gonna do verbatim minutes like this versus the summary style that we sometimes do?
It really only have to be a summary. They're, they don't have to be verbatim like that.
It's like this November seventh one. The. Yeah, but there's like a lot of just grammar things and.
I think that from when I took the class for open meeting law, it's supposed to recreate the meeting, so that it states, that's what the lawyer said that taught the class, when we went to the Hanover Town Hall, and it says they have to recreate the meeting.
They just have to be summarized, actually, probably turn the general. In the law states that it just has to be a summary of that, not verbatim. Does it necessarily, I mean, you can, you can go on websites in the different towns and look at the meeting, the meeting minutes, they're all, they're all very, as a very detailed compared to the other towns.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just you jump around in the format, like, this stuff, like, there's a lot of, okay, sure.
It's very, it's very. It's tough, yeah, because we're talking these things out, and then when you read it, it doesn't read the way.
It's very, yeah, it's very.
It doesn't read like a good book.
I'm saying that, when you're reading them, interesting and.
A little bit, like, say, like, I have like half-finished sentences that I say all the time, and I'm like, well, you know what I mean? And like, that doesn't really.
Inaudible murmur?
I don't think that all needs to be in there.
Yeah, that's what I kinda like the, because it gets all those little things out of there, and then you can concentrate on the important.
Ashley's doing very nicely.
Yeah, I've seen her around places like recently, but I haven't before that, you know? Because she's been at different, I think she's been at a couple of selectmen's meetings or something like that.
I don't know if I necessarily wanna approve this one, there's a whole bunch of just junk in here. Do we have these in Word format if we wanted to? Do we have these documents in a Word format if we wanted to try and correct some of the stuff in here? Somebody must be typing this up, right?
Yeah, love me most, there are a lot of mistakes.
I don't know, mistakes, it's just like stuff where, like, to Mark's point, there's a lot of unnecessary things in here, like.
I know, but.
It's me saying, okay, sure, the next one is me saying, okay.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what I was trying to say, that, you know, really, we don't have to put all of that in, but it seemed like everybody wanted more detail, so.
Okay.
We're kind of just getting it basically verbatim, but really, I actually was hoping to try and kind of summarize them more than that.
Does anybody have a strong feeling?
They would, they would have a literary license on them.
I think that it should be pretty detailed, but.
Yeah, see, now Amy's preferring that, the detail.
I feel like when the town looks back on it, which we do sometimes, as you can see, pick the minutes back up, it helps us to understand what was happening versus not understanding completely what was going on.
No, I think it's fine, but now, my OCD, like lowercase letters, starting sentences.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Misplaced commas, we've got like inaudible murmur, we've got.
I mean, it's very time, it's only going to, you know, I mean, I write what I can, but then it's.
So for that, it'd be nice if you had like a program that would actually translate audio and.
I wonder about that, I want, almost like voicemail, how they.
Yeah, they have dragons.
Right, yeah, I didn't even ever think of that.
That would be great.
And if you were gonna do it this way.
Because then we could be out of jobs. You know?
Others, AI voice. When Larry Beltschow was on the board, it was funny, because he'd always read through the thing, and he'd come up with three or four things, he'd be like, I know that's what I said, but I sound like an idiot when you read it, and it's like, he never did when he was talking, but when you read it, it never, it's always a little different.
Yeah.
So to that point, if we're, if we're gonna go with this format for this one.
Program, that would be awesome.
Might as well look into it and add an expense for it, it's probably only, I don't know, a couple hundred bucks, I would imagine.
But eventually, you won't have a job if that happens.
Well, I mean, I'm only here fifteen hours a week, it's kind of hard to get all the minutes done, and then show my, as well as, you know, all the things that I need to do, so it's kind of tough, you know, squeezing the minutes in, so which.
Maybe zoning would split the costs.
I don't think she needs it.
She'd type it on the fly?
She, she, I think she just typed at the meetings, I don't think she.
Oh, wow, that's a great idea.
I don't think she takes them, I think she does, yeah, I think she.
Will she start?
I think she's just, I think she's pretty much gonna do that, that's amazing.
Yeah, it is, the shorthand.
Yeah.
It's shorthand typing. What are you motioning to put this one off?
I'd like to just, I don't wanna hand mark this thing up, I'd rather mark it up in the actual Word document.
I had been doing it.
Yeah. Can you send out a Word document version of the minutes that we could then edit? And put track changes on or something for you?
I think they have to be in PDF, I can, I can find out.
I know we've had them in the past.
Really? You've been able to edit them yourself?
Yes, I think Terry used to send out Word documents in email prior to the hearing, so we could look at them ahead of time.
I know, I've sent you all those emails, I've sent you all of those.
But I feel like I've seen it in Word, because I've done the whole editing thing.
Oh, yeah, okay.
In the past.
I mean, I was told that I needed to send them out in PDF so they couldn't be altered or changed. I mean, I was told that I needed to send them out in PDF so they, they couldn't be altered or changed, but if you, I'll definitely check with Terry, I mean, that, that would save me a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
If you can do that, edit the results.
Because I'm not gonna hand-mark this thing up.
Yeah, it's not picking on you, we see how much you've done.
Yep.
Don't, don't ever take anything like that.
Oh, no, that's, no, that's...
Yeah, if you, if you could send us a Word document of it, that'd be great, if not, we'll mark this up if we need to do it by PDF.
So I do the original, the, the ones that were in a minute folder, so I need to have those back.
Yeah. These are all listed. So the ones that I have this way, those are the ones that are actually signed, and everything else, you wanna add? But you want all the other originals back to just stick back in our folders?
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna mark up the ones I had, I thought, all right, you know, I always do. Yeah, it's just not having the, you have to sign them.
Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I have a.
To adjourn?
Do you have one, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Check.